Good evening. I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Hudsonville City Commission for April 11th, 2023. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Boheis?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
Groth?
Here.
Larar?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. Commissioner Tobin DeVry is at home, and I talked to him, and he is not at all able to cover tonight. He apologizes. Now is a moment of silence. I would like to remind everybody that, was it last week? And Dave, I'll refer to you, was the 1956 tornado that went through Hudsonville, and I think we lost 20 of our residents and even more.
It was on April 3rd.
April 3rd. And you know that those, even though they're distant, they were traumas that the city experienced and kind of defines a community going forward. That's one of the reasons why we have you in the position as our urgency director. So if we just take a few moments of silence, and then we'll start the agenda. Thank you. I do believe there is a plaque in Hughes Park. Is that correct? And where is that? Where is that plaque?
I don't think it's rock. I can't tell you which one.
Yeah, someplace there in Hughes Park.
It should be right in front of the Commons Building.
Right in front of the Commons Building? Okay. Okay. And I think, and here again, I think there's 20 names on it that were residents. The former mayor was, watched it come through the city, so he has some pretty frightening tales of it. Now is the time for public comments. If there is residents that would wish to address us, please step forward. Hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items. There are four: minutes of the city commission work session dated March 14th, minutes of the city commission regular session dated March 14th, minutes of the city commission work session dated March 28th, minutes of the planning commission regular session dated March 15th. Is there a motion? Make a move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any changes to the consent agenda items? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to new business, public safety. March Public Safety statistical reports by the fire department. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. March was a fairly busy month. We had 52 calls for service. To kind of highlight a couple of things, we did have two structured fires in presidential states. We did assist Jamestown with a polar fire on a Friday night. And then the following Friday night, we were in Georgetown and Adamsburg, the central lodge. They were struck by lightning and had smoke in buildings, so we helped them sort that out. So it's been a busy month. Yeah, we report there. You can see the training that we did and the other activities as well. We had a couple firefighters that went through fire instructor one class, so they both passed that. That's the first step now towards being a fire officer, so maybe they took care of that. Any questions?
I'm just kind of curious. The two fires you had in presidential states, did they have smoke detectors? And is there an effort to keep them?
So the first one did not. They actually had one on each shelf in a closet, and it didn't go off until we opened the door to the closet, and the remaining smoke then got into the closet and set it off. They were only, they were very fortunate. They were only alerted to the fire by their son seeing the flames out of his window. And this was about 11:30 at night, so another half an hour, they would have probably been all sleeping, and we wouldn't have woken up to it. It was husband and wife and three kids, and then they had a neighbor girl over on the sidewalk. But it was pretty tragic. I did not see when they did. The second one did have smoke detectors, and that's what actually woke her up in the morning. So she was there with her son. Her son was, I believe, five-year-old, four- or five-year-old. He was already awake. The smoke detector woke her. So that did its job.
The first one, you said he looked out his window to see the fire? Did it start outside?
It did. So they actually had kind of like a little lead-to garage canopy. Underneath that, they had put a shed, had a roof and sides to it. Kind of a neat situation. The shed was packed full of things. Inside, there was a freezer, but also their water service came up from the outside of the concrete pad and through that shed and wrapped around. It was a heat tank, and the heat tank malfunctioned. So that shed started on fire first, which was actually right outside his window. So tight to his window, so his window was blocked, and then he saw the flames in the shed through his window.
Are there smoke detectors and batteries available for those residents? Do we help them?
As of right now, we don't have a program for the city of Hudsonville. It's something that we are looking at. We can get them through the state of Michigan, through the, they call it the Fire Help Fund or whatever, we can get them. For us right now, it's just going to be putting together the plans to distribute them, and it's, they actually want you to install them, not just give them away. They want you to install them through the Michigan way. So if we do that, it'll be a time commitment. So we have to really look at that and make sure that we can do it, because yes, it's definitely.
I mean, we had two close calls, Tyler. That might be something to think about on the road down, further on down, about whether or not we want to support fire detectors in presidential states, because those people are particularly vulnerable, as we well know.
Chief, are there programs at the state or federal level with regards to providing funds for smoke detectors?
So on the federal level, FEMA does, through their fire safety program. That is an annual thing that you can apply to. So the state has their program, and you just partner up with the state, and they just provide you the detectors. No funding for installation. On the federal side, that, through FEMA, then yes, there's money there for installation as well as the detectors. So I think if you look at it, we'll check it out, but we probably need more for the federal program, because if we're going to have firefighters out there getting paid to put them in, we would want to have those resources available.
The other concern I always have about presidential states is we don't maintain their fire hydrant system. That's a private, that's, they privately maintain that. So how was your fire pressure at the hydrants?
So pressure was good. They do lack a little on their maintenance program, and we've been in touch with them about that. So basically, it's how easy the caps come off and how easy the valves turn. Because RGPW, even though they do a phenomenal job in the city, turning those valves, checking those caps, releasing them, the part, not so much. So if our guys took care of those, it'd be wonderful. They don't, or they can't. So we have to kind of stay on them, that they maintain those items.
Any questions for the chief and the dice? Well done. Thank you. Sergeant, good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
How was Florida?
Seven and sunny. So it was pretty good, if that's what you like. Thank you. We were busy in March. Our calls went up quite a bit. We were actually pretty few calls last month. It seemed like it's continued to get busier now as well as with warmer weather takes up. Later day, we'd get a lot more calls. Last month, the deputies all went to and serve restraint again. We continue to learn about jiu-jitsu and how to protect ourselves, restrain people. It's been really, really good. It's really easy tactics that we need to learn. So we did some taser recertification. We did not have any decoys. I was hoping one of you guys would be sure not to. And just, just recently, we started monitoring some stuff on Highland Drive. Deputy Thurler's been out the last two days, and I think he's made close to 20 traffic stops on Highland just because the highway issues in Zeeland, detours coming down Chicago Drive eastbound, and instead of going to Jensen and staying on Chicago Drive, they're taking a few hours a day or two a second. So we are going to have our hands full all summer. So just to be aware of that, so we're going to spend a lot of our time. Other than that, everything is going well. So any questions?
Question, or just a comment. Obviously, we continue to have school shootings. Is our resource officer at school the whole time that kids are there?
Ninety to eighty percent of the time he's in this. He goes to all the schools too.
I'm just curious, because that's an issue at some of the schools that were, shootings have taken place.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're lucky if it's at the ice. I mean, we're close by. It's not going to take me long to get there, so we're not here.
Yeah, I'm just curious. If he left and all during the day, or he was?
He'll get lunch once in a while, or sometimes he'll travel between schools.
Just curious.
So are we going to put the speed trailer out on Highland?
That's, will be one of our spots, yes. We're going to put the speed signs back up on 32nd here in the next couple of weeks. Not so bad. So we're just working with DPDW to get those programmed and set back up, so.
So it won't be passed by trucks doing 55, huh? They might do 40 now.
We'll see. It may slow, because it does slow now, I know this, so.
Any other questions for the sergeant?
My neighbor moved out of town, so.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Dave, welcome. It's nice to see you bring your wife tonight, too.
Yeah, she wanted to know what was on here, and I tried to tell her, but she didn't see for herself. All right. Reports go short, because March is quite often a quiet month, of course, depends on the weather. And you might be kind of surprised why in our staff meeting, we were talking about Safety Night, which is in September. For us to do something creative with Safety Night, we can. You just start thinking about it now. Our presentation of Safety Night is usually a table with maybe some brochures and a traffic line and a vest and stuff like that. So we said, no, they can do better than that. And so I've got the team almost the other thing about trying to make it something more interesting when we get there. So that's why it's on the list over there. Our SkyOne training brings us up to date. We've, it's been since pre-pandemic, since we've had in-person SkyOne training. So we have the whole department out for that, and that brings all of our credentials up to date to make sure that we are able to do the storm spot. We've been doing it for years, but we always get a reminder or learn something new from the weather service. One thing I want to mention that is not on here, just kind of some foreshadowing. There's been a lot of news about train derailments, right? And we're all discovering that those happen a whole lot more often than we thought. Well, they happen pretty much daily, and we just didn't really realize it. The city, we do have an SOP, a standard operating procedure for how do we handle asthma train derailments, because that is our biggest threat, really. We have asthma going from downtown to Chicago all the time, right? And so we do have a procedure for that that we want to review with you all, but before we do that, a couple of things are going to happen. We're going to get together ourselves and just kind of make sure that we can put together a nice summary for you and write a little detail. And also, there is an informative session coming up with the LUPC, I believe, in May, if I remember it all right. So we'd like to know that, too. So we'll come back to either in the May meeting or June meeting and give you some details on our asthma train SOP.
Do you think you want a special work session for that, or do you want to do it regular? I would prefer a work session.
Yeah, I think we can keep the presentation. By all means, it needs to be the length it needs to be, but anywhere from five to 15 minutes, Mr. Mayor. I don't see an issue with doing it as a discussion item, as part of our May 9th meeting.
Maybe we just have a 6:30 work session and break here and come into chambers afterwards.
And let the commission ask them.
Have a regular, that way we have it in the conference room. We can have a more free-flowing discussion.
Yeah, we can do that.
Is that work ready?
Yeah, it works well.
Very good. Any questions for Dave?
Dave, is there a, I know a few years ago, they did a tabletop exercise on such an event.
Yes.
I'm wondering, since we have some new people who will be involved, would it be time to revisit that again?
It is a great time to do that, yeah. So yeah, we, and we need to figure out what do we want our exercises to be over the course of the other year, next year, whatever. And yeah, the train derailment tabletop is definitely in order, especially since the one we did before, we did it, you know, the scenario was you had a fairgrounds event going on as well. And one of the challenges is getting a whole bunch of people out of the fairgrounds. And I think now the Fair Board has had a chance to chew on that. It's a good time to revisit that.
Anything else for Dave? Have a good evening. Thanks for being here.
Thanks.
Moving on to city treasurer's monthly reports.
Hi. Today, we'll review the February data. So on the general fund summary, you'll see that percent of budget for revenues were at 72.8% and expenditures 56.29%. In the revenue summary, you can see we brought in $207,801, bringing the revenue to date to $4,313,782. Expenditures, 277, 870, so pretty in trend with last fiscal year, and that brings us to $3,567,041 for the year. In the investment report for February, you'll see that we had a CD mature with AAC Credit Union that was at a 0.55% rate. I actually went ahead and reinvested with them at a 4.65%, so we got a really good rate bump there. And then I also worked with Financial Northeastern to get a CD with Direct FCU for 4.9%. So overall, for the month of February, we earned $18,445 in interest.
In one month?
Yeah.
This has got to be a record.
It's, the rates are doing really well, so I'm trying to take advantage of that and make us some money wherever we can.
Wow. $18,000, how much?
$445. And 99 cents. Yeah, don't forget that. Any questions on the investment report?
Hearing none, we'll go to payment of bills. Is there a motion to confirm the payment of bills? Motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $266,790.71, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
Support. It's been moved by the finance committee and supported by the mayor pro tem. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
Larar?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Pay the bills. Moving on to item number nine, ACH fund distribution. Is there a motion to confirm the funds?
Yes. Motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated clearinghouse in the amount of $106,991.40, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
Larar?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Distribute the funds. Moving on to administration, item number 10, concept proposals of quotes for a community-centered library. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept Progressive AE's proposal for architectural engineering services for a community center slash library.
I'll second that. It's been moved and supported. I see Melissa in the audience. Did she choose to come discuss this, or?
I'm just here to hear if they have any questions.
Okay. This came up last time. I think the commission just wanted to make sure that, I think in particular, Tyler, you were comfortable with it, and you and I have discussed this. It's been pretty important that we continue this momentum with our master plan.
Sure. I got my staff, and I did review the proposal, and it's like from Progressive, looking at the deliverables at this time. For that amount, I think it would be in the city's best interest to move forward with that. As we dive more into the, you know, looking at the proposal here, the create portion, the frame portion, and the outcomes that it's going to come, I think these are going to be great materials that the city can use moving forward, whether we're talking property acquisition, public relations, informing the public. So at this time, I do agree with the ad hoc committee and do recommend we move forward.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? I've worked with a couple of people who are on their proposal, and they're excellent at what they do. Very good. So that's an affirmation. Absolutely. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Larar?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Move forward with that motion, and thank you, Melissa, for all that work.
Thank you, Melissa.
I know we've all put a little effort into that, and the ad hoc team and the library board appreciate that, your leadership in moving this forward. We have great plans. Moving on to public act number 152, exemption. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 23-1762, adopting the annual exemption option for the medical benefit plan coverage year July 1, 2023 through July 30, 2024.
Through June.
Thank you. Through June.
Dan, you're on the personnel committee. Support. It's been moved and supported by the members of the personnel committee. At this point, I think I'll just turn over to you, Tyler, and you can speak to this real briefly, please.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, after meeting with the personnel committee, talking to the city's HR director as well as the finance director, appears that we have something new, relatively new to the city of Hudsonville, in which the, I'm looking for the actual terminology here, the calculations that's used for health insurance contributions from the employer to employees went up by 1.3% as dictated by the state. The city's health insurance coverage as presented is looking at a 4.9% increase. Just to remind the commission, the current breakdown is an 82 to 18 split between employer and employee. As such, if we continue with that amount, we go above that hard cap, or that hard cap, excuse me. The hard cap is established using the previous 12 months' data. One of the reasons that we believe, and in talking with staff and a couple of my colleagues, that 1.3% is using not only data that is at least a year old, but it's coming out of a pandemic in which things were shut down. Healthcare costs actually is charged to the insurance companies, was down, all things considered, due to stagnation of everyday life. So this is one of those things where we're seeing the inflation go up, but the way that the state has dictated that 1.3 is using old data with a real-world situation that impacted. So what we're talking about here is maintaining the employee employment breakdown of 82 to 18%. With that being said, the cost to the city will be a little bit above $7,000 a year, more than we paid in the previous fiscal year for health insurance, to provide health insurance. However, but because we are now ahead of that hard cap, we do need to pass the attached resolution in order to be able to continue in this manner. Kayla, is there anything that I may have missed out there, based on our discussions with Andrea?
No, I think you've got it.
Okay, thank you.
I know one of the questions that I heard from the commission referencing, would this mean more labor in terms of our paperwork at the city? Does it change that, and how do we manage that?
Sure, that's a great question. I did talk to Andrea this afternoon, and she did reach out to our broker, Gallagher Basset, with regards to the additional paperwork. From what we've been communicated to, communicated from them, is that outside of this resolution, the paperwork on our end, we believe to be minimal. As compared to other municipalities in which there may be more than one union, or the CBA dictates a different percentage split, there would be additional paperwork there. Currently, the city has, is engaged with one union, which is our public works team, and as such, it is my belief and the belief of Andrea as well, that the additional paperwork will be very minimal.
Very good. Any questions for the dice? Gusher?
Mr. Mayor, I will add on one thing. If, for whatever reason, there was additional paperwork, anything changed, or we were wrong, moving forward, it's looking like, all things equal, without seeing the numbers, that a hard cap resolution will be put forth in April of every year, at which time we could reevaluate how we go about this in the future.
Very well. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Branson?
No.
What was that?
No.
Larar?
No.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to social district establishment. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve resolution number 23-1763, establishing a social district in downtown Hudsonville so as to permit the public consumption of alcohol in common areas pursuant to Act 124 of 2020.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and supported. I believe Lindsay or Sarah, did you want to speak to us or not?
Yeah.
You've done a lot of work on this, so this is your moment to shine. We want to thank you.
We want to get it done before our events this summer, hopefully. The past two weeks since we've talked with you guys, we did meet with all four committed licensees, which are the restaurants in downtown within the social district that do have the liquor license already. So that's Bosco's, DJ's, Dorado's, and Wing Doozy, and they all are very excited about being a part of this. So once they get final approval, if this goes through, then they have to also apply to the state. But you'll see their letters in the agenda for the commitment on their part. We did change the map, which Sarah will get into. We did extend it through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then this is the updated map that Sarah is going to kind of go into a little bit.
So based on your guys' comments from the work session that we were a part of, we extended the district down to DJ's and to include the fountain area, to have a common space in that zone for gathering. The Harvey Street down onto Cherry and into a little bit of that green space there right near Allen. That is all special occasion only, so that would be used for our city events like Reuben Eight Day, if we ever expanded it, or for the parade, which runs through there this year. That is something that Tyler, as the city manager, can just have turned on for those events, and then the signage can kind of shift to include those areas. But then otherwise, as you've already seen, it is up plaza to, in the future, for the Hudsonville Flats building to include for the Thai restaurant they're proposing, and then along our current Wunorf area, which is where Wing Doozy actually isn't on there because they were a recent addition. They submitted yesterday. So that would have to be an amendment to the next motion if you guys wanted to include them this month. And that Dorado's and Bosco's are there as well. If you have any questions for the map, that was a chance to change it before we submit to the state. It's very easy to change in the future, but just before we submit now.
Could you specify a little bit what we'd need to do to include Wing Doozy? It looks like there's a blue box that we'd have to add to the map. Is that the extent of that addition?
That is the, yes, and I have a motion instead of just the three businesses that would then be changed to include Wing Doozy as well.
Couple map questions for you, Sarah.
Yeah?
So I'm looking at the one that I didn't see coming, but essentially, the bank ATM, where the bank ATM is, there's a dog leg kind of going back towards the Wunorf. What's the purpose of that? Because it goes through a parking lot.
So the purpose of that, you're talking?
It's like right next to Reform Bookstore is in there now, I believe.
Oh, yes. So that dog leg is the DDA parking lot. We own that. That is kind of where future.
Oh, okay. So they can put a vent?
Yes. We could do a food truck rally there and include that area for the social district. There is some green space, a little bit toward the east that Lindsay and I were thinking, since it's not utilized right now, we could kind of create another social mo there with some tables, to kind of keep people on that path down to Dorado, or sorry, DJ's engaged versus just walking down a street that doesn't have the tons of development on it right now.
Okay. The other question I have is, I understand why we did the piece essentially north of Gemmons, down the middle of the strip, but that's a busy parking lot.
Yes.
Essentially, it's an extension of the street. Was there any concern by the business owners, specifically Gemmons, the jewelry store, some of those others that are not associated with this?
Kimmons is very much in support.
In front of him?
Yes.
Okay.
We're talking about, he's looking at developing some more, probably landscaping it and.
Okay, I get it. I was coming at it from a safety point of view, but if, if Okay, I get, I was coming at it from a safety point of view, but if, if Gemen's is on board?
He's very much on board.
There's even a chance to, I know it looks a little funny down there, um, the parcels aren't on, but how the parcels work is, um, they extend all the way to the center of the road. Um, that was where the road went through the fountain back in the day, and that's just what we have to work with. Um, there is a potential for an ingress and resignment, um, for that area so that we can kind of shift it to follow the true road rather than going through the parking spaces. But unfortunately, the sidewalk under the mezzanine, um, that is on that plaza building is private property. They wouldn't ever really be able to utilize that. So we were thinking potentially in the future, just doing something interesting with striping, um, maybe if the businesses were open to it, this was just our heads, um, taking, you know, that first strip of parking spaces, um, past the ones that are straight on the building to kind of create a pathway to something that feels more safe. Um, but that's something we're brainstorming along with the signage and put all of those as well. So something to be looked at.
The two of you did excellent work on this.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
But you want to clarify, um, you can't drink on private property with, with these, so.
Yep.
I know Andrew Gemen was really excited about maybe having people come into his, uh, grilling, uh, shows.
So what he could do, um, even if we did extend it down into the front, um, of his kind of parking lot to the east there, people would have to stay on the sidewalk and on the road in that area. But there is the opportunity for him, um, to potentially work with one of the businesses and get a day liquor license. That is something the state provides, um, for attempt to have a beer available there. Um, and it could kind of function on his own property, but the social district, you know, that can't go into private property. Um, we could, again, I could talk with the attorney about easement, um, since there is a public access pathway kind of running through there. Um, it's covered by the legend, so you can't see it, but if there is some type of option to work with them, we'd love to kind of feel that out and see what we could do.
Yeah, he, 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 you might want to have a conversation with him when you get a chance, Andrew, cause he's, he's on board. He wants to find out how it can enhance his business. The other, the other piece just concerns me a little bit. Bill White of White Flame.
Mm-hmm, yes.
If he sees people down that part of the city walking around with alcohol or beer, he's going to immediately assume that his patrons can also participate, but he's not a liquor license holder. So how do we educate him?
Is there even a route you can get to them? There is. They could go on to Allen and connect around the side. Um, that was just something we didn't really look into. That's why the special occasion.
Right, right.
Is only down there just kind of for the parade. If that's something the commission is opening to consider, we could, we just, you know.
I, I, I don't know if we want to solve that now. I'm just going to give you a heads up that that's going to.
It's a possibility. It's very easy to add a license.
And knowing, knowing Bill White, he's going to want to participate.
Right.
We haven't talked to him, have we?
No.
He might want to have that conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Commissioners, you have anything else to add or bring up? Tyler?
Yeah, just a couple of quick thoughts. Um, the, uh, there's a question about the D D A parking lot. Um, one thing that I encourage the commission, the members of public, uh, to do, um, in their free time is let's not think of parking lots just as a place to put cars. They're a place that can be inviting. We've traditionally thought of parking lots as a place just for cars, but they have much more use than that if we look at that. So as we're talking about the usage of the social district, whether it's festivals or parades, um, what this addition does is allows us to be creative and offer another connectivity point, um, with the social district. Uh, my, my second point is we want to keep in mind that social district, the first word there is social. And so creating an atmosphere in which people can be social outside of a beverage is going to be equally important. A district is not citywide. So, um, launching this, I think, gives us a, a great framework to work around of how we utilize this moving forward. But we want to make sure we're keeping, um, everybody safe. We're within the, we're within the confines of all legalities. Um, but what are we trying to do? What, what's the social part of social district? What is our goals here? And I think once we develop the programming around this, and this is a phenomenal start, as we talk about the village green, as we talk about creating a vibrant, distinctive, um, atmosphere, um, I think this will be a crucial element to that. So I think the most important thing we can take from this is, is what the future holds. So any ideas from commission, staff and members of the public would definitely be appreciative of how we can best utilize this, um, to have it reach its maximum potential. So. And I will, uh, second that, uh, commissioner. Um, the, the team planning the zoning and the marketing department have done a heck of a job on this, so kudos to you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just excited to see it happen.
Estimate on earliest, if, on approval?
We've been getting feedback from different, specifically beyond it went very quickly. I think it's because it was towards the beginning. The stay at home order, which the state was trying to get these implemented. We talked to the city of Granville last week and they mentioned more like three to four months is what it seemed like. Um, and that was just the lull of a check was sitting on one of the desks of the state employee, and so it was a miscommunication. Um, so we're expecting a two to three month. We're hoping before, having even been Harvey in July.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. And I hope to see all the commissioners there.
Yes, beer in hand.
I didn't say that. Roll call please.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to the second social district, motion of the evening, license approval. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve resolution number two three dash one seven six four, approving and recommending Dorado's Mexican Grill and Bar, D J's Pizza Pub and Bosco's Pub for M L C C consideration and approval for social district, district permits.
Second the motion I make.
Are we adding? Were you going to talk about the added to that?
I'd say just add it right in there.
Um.
Yep.
Wait, can you make a motion to amend the motion first?
Make a motion to amend the motion and to add in Wing Dozy. A second map, thank you.
And then you can make that motion.
The motion has been amended to add Wing Dozy and it's been approved. Now we have the motion on the table here to, uh, discuss anything else. I think we already discussed all the details. Is that right, ladies?
Yes.
Very good. Commissioners, are we good? Roll call please.
Okay, so this is to amend the motion.
Okay.
So Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, now vote on the motion, please.
Julie keeping us honest. The motion's still on the table.
Is it? You didn't add Bosco or Wing Dozy, did you?
Yeah, I did.
Through the amendment.
Through the amendment.
Restate it.
Restate the original motion?
The.
No, the amended motion.
Motion to approve resolution number two three dash one seven six four, approving and recommending Dorado's Mexican Grill and Bar, D J's Pizza Pub and Bosco's Pub and Wing Dozy for M L C C consideration and approval for social district permits.
Second it. Been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Clerk, are we good?
Yes, Robert's rules is very.
I, I'm not disputing it. I want to make sure that we're.
That's why.
That's why you have that job there.
Hearing none, I'll call for the roll please.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Groth, sorry, Lorar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries. Well done to the staff and we're looking forward to, uh, our social districts this year. Moving on to item number fourteen, Hudsonville Flats, public act two one zero application. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash seventeen sixty-five to set a public hearing for May ninth, twenty twenty-three to consider the request of three four two four Chicago Drive, L L C. For a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and supported. This motion is for a public hearing only. It's not our final approval, but it sets the public hearing that will be on May ninth, which is the same as the next city commission.
Yes, sir.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Lorar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Boheis?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries. Before I ask for an adjournment, let's go down the dais and since you're sitting at the end there, city manager, I'll let you, uh, take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things. Um, I did talk with Mayor Northrup prior to tonight's meeting and, um, we'd like to move forward with a workshop on April twenty-fifth. Um, the agenda is still to be determined, but, um, it's looking like we'll have an overview of, uh, current, ongoing and potentially future, um, infrastructure projects. I'm meeting with Bob Miller and Don DeVries, um, our engineer, uh, tomorrow to do progress, um, look at budgets and as well as consider, uh, future grants that are upcoming and how it might fit within our C I P. Um, I'm a big proponent of matching grants, um, and as such, now's the time to start looking, um, in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six as it relates to, um, grants to be available. Uh, we mentioned on May ninth, the, uh, presentation for, um, train derailment, um, Sergeant Steiniger.
Steiniger.
Uh, Chief Essenberg and, uh, and Dave Dahl, um, have all, uh, agreed to, uh, work together on that. So I look forward to a fruitful presentation on them, which is a serious topic that we've seen, um, in various parts of the country over the last few months. Then on May sixteenth at six P M., um, Kayla and I feel comfortable moving forward with a budget discussion, um, with the city commission. Um, this will just be a discussion. Um, it will be, uh, I believe to be a fruitful meeting and as such, I don't expect to be a quick meeting as it relates to my first budget, uh, recommendation for you. Um, I can tell you Kayla and staff have done a heck of a job, um, on getting things together and I'm confident we'll put forth a.
Is that May sixteen or the regular work session date?
May sixteenth. Um, the regular work session date is a conflict with a conference with a key staff member. If we would like to change that from May sixteenth, we can do that. Um, we can do that. I can either poll internally, but our traditional date's not going to work.
And we were on the twenty-third?
Yeah. Kayla, you're at conference, correct?
Right, so we're just moving it from the twenty-third to the sixteenth and doing the budget?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
And then we would not have a workshop meet. It would replace the, the meeting on the twenty-third.
Okay.
And I will turn in budgets a week earlier, so you will still have at least two weeks to review it.
Uh, the April twenty-fifth work session, there'll be a dinner provided?
Yes, on April twenty-fifth and May sixteenth.
Okay, and then on the next city commission meeting, which is May ninth, we'll have a work session at six thirty for railroad emergency.
Six thirty, yep, and then we'll have our public hearing at seven.
There will be a separate miring, meeting then, okay. Any questions on the schedule upcoming? Thank you, uh, Tyler. Dave?
No, I just, I won't be able to be there at the sixteen meeting, but you guys can hold out before.
I don't know.
You'll have to round everything down.
I probably won't be able to make the sixteen either.
And maybe if we have the two absent, maybe we need to look for another date. Is there a, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday. We could maybe have it on a Wednesday or Thursday, is it?
Wednesday is going to be a bit of a planning potential. I don't even know what week it is.
The seventeenth would be fine. If that's, if that's the week, that's good.
You want to, we want to shoot for the seventeenth instead?
Or the thirty, the thirty is still the last Tuesday in May.
Just for an idea, uh, because we do need, I'd like, uh, Kayla to attend the meeting as well as public works supervisor or superintendent Bob Miller.
Right, right.
Um, I will shoot out a doodle poll.
Okay.
Um, to staff, appropriate staff and listen. We'll get that date hammered out.
Okay, that, so that date's a little squishy right now.
Yeah, um, you know, with it being a budget meeting, I think it's really important that we try to get everyone to be there.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable not having all the commissioners here.
Yeah. Tyler, what time are you thinking for the next work session on the twenty-fifth of April?
On the twenty-fifth, it's okay with, uh, with you guys. We'll do it at six P M.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Work obligations, okay. And, uh, we'll run it, um, on the budget discussion and we'll do that at six P M. too. I'll put that in the doodle poll.
Whatever date we end up with.
Yep.
Both of those dinners provided?
Yes, on, for April twenty-fifth and May sixteenth. I, I imagine those to be, um, quality discussions.
Those will be long meetings, yeah. We don't have many long meetings, but those will be long. Phil?
I just want to tell Steve, um, and your staff, that last work session we had was very informative. It was nice to get to meet some of your, uh, some of your staff and see the really cool equipment that you guys get to have that hopefully we never have to use. We had that conversation.
Uh, okay, the work sessions we got discussed, budget work sessions we got discussed, um, proclamations, uh, there is a, I sent out a email. Um, historically, I have not been a pro, proponent of proclamations because I think it kind of messes up the, uh, the city commission agenda and it creates some, could create conflict quite often. Uh, Phil has brought in the rules of the city council from Holland that I think what I'll do is probably scan these and send them to everybody and have you take a look at them.
It can be a future discussion.
Because I think it's some future discussion, it would be probably prudent for us to kind of, uh, formalize it a little bit. When would we do proclamations? Um, because they can be necessary sometimes, but I think I've only done maybe two since I've been here, so.
We used to.
And we used to a lot. Problem is you do one for one on somebody on that side. You can do one for somebody on the other side and then it creates dissent that we just don't necessarily need, in my perspective. Um, so I don't know if we can get a copy of that or like, I get that, maybe Tyler, can you scan that and get that all to all of us? Um, I want to thank the commissioners that attended the ribbon cutting today. There's a lot of ribbon cuttings upcoming and always appreciate whenever we get the city commissioners to appear. And, uh, if I'm not there, I would expect one of you to step up and talk about, uh, Crisco or lard or pork chops too, so, okay? Got it? Uh, I want to thank, uh, the staff and the newsletter. I thought the newsletter was very good. And, uh, I know the residents read that and it makes a powerful impression on the residents and they do appreciate what they see and what they hear. And that's what sets us apart. That's one of the reasons why we don't have a lot of people ever showing up for public comments because they trust us and we communicate and we don't have personal agendas on this dais. So thank you to all those that worked on that, uh, on that, uh, newsletter, which will always be, what, twelve pages? Is that right? How many pages was it? Eight? Eight, oh, eight, okay. Not twelve.
Last four from you.
Uh, that is all I have. I'll turn it over to you, Larry.
All good. Um, April twenty-fifth at four P M. At least those of you who have packets for nomination need to turn them in. I would like them before four P M. on the twenty-fifth, but, you know, just F Y I.
We have two of the commissioners here and myself. Somebody needs to call and talk to Tobin, so, uh, I'll leave that up to one of you guys, okay? Please. Anything else to come before the dais? Anybody in the audience? Last chance. Nice to see you here, Melissa and staff. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All of us in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.